All right, it's five o'clock. Dan, you ready? All right. All right, folks, we're gonna call the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, February 6th, 2023, to order. And Greg, if you wanna call yours.
Yeah, we'll call the Village Board, or Village Board. Village Board, Plan Commission to order, please.
And then we'll take the roll call for the Village Board. Candy?
All right, so we have some of the Village Board. We have passion.
Here.
Philo.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Ben Campton.
Here.
Here.
And then for Planning Commission, Vano.
Here.
Glish.
Yes, here.
Mar. Nor, Meyer.
Yes.
Majeski. Molzon.
Here.
Holdoff.
Here.
And Schenelli.
Here.
All right.
All right, Greg, so here's.
Yeah, next item, uh, before we.
Um, excuse me, I'd like to put a motion that we move public comment ahead of this.
We got, we got it handled, Mike. That's what he was gonna say right now.
We got, we got it.
We did our homework.
First item is before we proceed with anything here, we're gonna go back and, as part of the agenda that we have typically at these public meetings, the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board and Plan Commission, including items both on and off the agenda. Under the open meetings law, uh, you can provide the information to us, we can ask questions, but we cannot pass any, uh, rulings whatsoever. So is anybody here that wants to talk about anything that's not on the agenda, that is on the agenda, keep in mind, we will be talking about the agenda later on. Anybody?
So Greg, this is for A, for, um, three A and B only?
I'm sorry, sure. That's right, it's, it's a convol- it's not, it's a confusing and involved agenda for the.
Excuse me, I would like a public comment period now for all the people that are here for the entire agenda.
Well, we're gonna have it, aren't we gonna have it?
I was gonna have another one.
But that's, yeah, but that's way down the list and people leave. People come to the meeting, we're here to represent the citizens of Oregon, we should hear from them, rather than put it an hour and a half into a meeting. So my motion is, is to open up a public comment period at the beginning of the agenda for whatever's on people's minds for the entire time that people want to talk about it, and then we'll move on with our meeting.
Does that require a three-minute maximum?
Well, it requires a second.
I understand that. It's, it's by the Village Board, it's not by the Plan Commission.
I'll second for discussion.
I'm not in charge, but talking first sounds like.
No, we're not, we haven't finished the vote yet, sir. Just now, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Ma'am, whatever. You have a motion, you have a second, I believe, don't you?
Yeah, so.
Don't we have, don't you have to vote?
Well, I, I said for discuss, can I dis, can we discuss, or is this a?
You have a motion, you have a second, don't you all say in favor, say aye?
Yeah, I seconded it. But we discuss it first.
No, excuse me, ma'am.
Boy Scouts who are sitting here tonight, and they would like to speak so they can get home to dinner, we're in our lives.
Look, we're trying to get a meeting started, will you please sit down? Please, sit down, please. Sit down, please.
So, so this will be for everything that's on the agenda, we were gonna have it, another separate one for after, before we went into closed session, but we can do it all right now, if that's what you guys want.
Can I?
Yeah.
Speak, yeah, I was just gonna say, my thought is, um, yes, I would like people to keep in mind that we're trying to get through some items by a certain time, there's a staff member that needs to leave, um, so, you know, adhering to the time limit would be important, and, um, speaking to the items that are on the agenda tonight, if it's something that can wait, um, you know, maybe wait till we discuss it or whatever, if you're able to wait, wait, if not, then speak now. So with that caveat, I'm good with that, I'd like to move it all to the front, like Mike said.
That's fine.
Okay, I wanna just clarify, because you said if you can wait, do you mean wait till a different day, or wait till later tonight?
Uh, well, either, I mean, if people.
Well, then that means two, two open times, basically, community input time, so.
And that, that's what, that's what we were planning.
I'm trying to figure out what you're asking.
Oh.
We were, we were planning to have two, but if you wanna have one.
Well, if people, if people need to leave, I think they should be able to speak at the first one, even if it's not about items three A and B, that's what I'm trying to say. If you have to leave, speak, speak the earlier one, but we can have a second one later, I'm open to that, too.
All right. All right, so we need a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, hold on a second. I also think that because it's a joint meeting, they should vote as well.
Okay.
And make a motion to follow the Village Board's direction, or?
Or no. Do we have a motion to, uh, file a recommendation to the Village Board? Is there somebody to make that motion?
So moved.
Do we have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, you have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No opposing?
Yes. I'm opposing.
One opposing?
Yep.
All right, so we'll have, we'll have the public comment now. Any, so this is gonna be three minutes, anybody who wants to come up, you have three minutes to speak, uh, we'll keep time for you, uh, anything on or off the agenda is your pleasure. When you come up, just tell us your name and your address, if you would, please. And one of the things we wanna, we want, because there are a lot of people here, if you don't have any new information, I mean, we wanna hear the new stuff, um, rather than everybody sort of saying the same thing, if you, if you would, please, keep that in mind, okay?
Can I also, I'm sorry to interrupt you, could I also make a, a request, that we allow Village residents to speak first?
Okay.
Hi, my name is Jill Ellis, I am a resident, um, I live at 280 Eagle Drive in Oregon. I'd like to also introduce these two fine Boy Scouts, uh, Jackson and Alex, um, okay. So I'd like to share my comments from long experience in RFP response preparation, while there's still some time to possibly affect the contents of the RFP we're proposing for the Sculpture Garden. I worked for 14 years as a proposal preparation specialist for Energy Systems Group, a company that completed a successful project at the Oak Hill Correctional Complex, uh, several years ago. I prepared the RFP response that helped to win that project, among many others. In my experience, RFPs written with open-ended scopes result in wasted time, effort, and money, both for the responding companies and for the people evaluating, uh, the responses. It's easy to see why loosely defined RFP parameters could cause wasted time in engineering for responding companies, because they have to devise multiple solutions for sections of property that they ultimately might not be able to use, however, it can also result in confusing arrays of responses for the village to sort through, because, um, there could be, uh, no apples-to-apples comparisons. Company A might propose very different allocations of land and buildings than Company B or Company C, likely needing, leading to the need to issue follow-up RFP, or further rounds of time-consuming clarifications and responses. So I urge you to commit to defining the scope of the RFP to exclude the 1.4 acres of land that fronts on Main Street and contains the most mature trees. The, but, the benefits of defining the scope this way would assure that RFP responses received will all be required to focus on the same areas of property, verifi resulting in straightforward comparisons. Responding companies won't feel that there's been a bait and switch, where a portion of property has been dangled in front of them, but then later not allowed for development, and then the board shows that it's listened to the results of the community survey that favored the establishment of the park. I feel that this parcel of land, combined with the enthusiastic efforts of people who'd worked to make it a beautiful park, including some of our scouts and many other people, would be an absolute gift to the community. For relatively small investment, we could seize this opportunity and make it your legacy to all of Oregon's residents for generations to come. And now these scouts have, um, some comments that they would like to read.
Make sure you, you speak into the mic, please, so we can hear you.
Don Bloom, um, Clara Bloom, Chlora Bloom, Ake.
That's a tough one. But if you can read the. He's having a hard time with the cursive, I could help with that. There's been much research on the topic of having access to nature that can benefit both mental and physical health, the iconic oak trees are a symbol of strength and resilience, hopefully representative of the Village of Oregon community.
Um, Maki Kow-Pill.
Gorkin, maybe?
Gorkin, sorry if I pronounce any of these last names wrong. Candy.
Cindy.
Hellman. Hellman.
Homer.
Homer. Anna Kleckner.
Kleckner.
Joe Turman.
Uh, Temptee, maybe? Uh, registering and supportive dedicating the 1.4 acres on the hill fronting Main Street for a community park, the remaining 1.4 acres for development in scale and character within the surrounding neighborhood.
Um, Alex Eekings, safe biking path and nice park. Jackson Outhouse, hangouts, um, hanging out spot and beautiful place to see. April Seekings, cool hangout spot, good place for bird, bird watching, great picnic spot, small sport spot, mini soccer and frisbee games. Karen A. Baker, like walking paths used for farmer's market, craft booths, food carts, picnics, art expos, programs, music festivals with small groups.
Okay, so if we could have those for our record, we would appreciate that very much.
Who do I hand them to?
That, you, you may give them to me. Thank you very much, fellas.
Good job.
Good job.
All right, next.
Hi there, can you hear me well enough if I speak like this, or would you want me to use the mic?
I think we want you to use the mic.
So people at home can hear you, too, or streaming.
Oh, I see you're streaming, no problem. Okay, my name is Beth Molson Huddle, this is my son Hank, and he's also a scout, by the way, and we live at 248 North Main, so we live right across from the property, and we, and many community members, I know this is repeat information, but we have been asking for the park. There have been many ways that we've been asking for the park, and when I heard that the RFP may not include specific designated area and enough space for the park, I got pretty upset. I thought, we've done the survey, my husband came this summer and did the listening session, we've written letters, we've written letters, I've written to the Oregon Observer, I've written to you all, you probably recognize my name, Beth Molson Huddle, and some of you probably wish you didn't see it when you saw it come up in your email box, but we've all been working pretty hard, and I think it's really important for the village who represent us, we voted for you. Randy, I voted for you, I see you not looking at me, but I did vote for you.
Thank you.
And I would like you to show that you, that you really mean it, that you're gonna give us this park and you're gonna put it in the RFP, you're gonna give us the space facing Main Street, because if you don't, it's gonna get lost in the developers, they're gonna take it all up, and they're gonna spend, you know, they're gonna try to make as much money as they can, right? That's what developers do, I work at the school business, I would know. So what I want is for you to show us that you're listening, that you're listening to all the things that we've said. We've got a big sports complex for the baseball people, we've got a really nice place that they're gonna put houses at the bottom of this property, okay, so everybody's getting something, but what about the people who really want a beautiful space, who want to safeguard the beautiful historic trees, who wanna build a garden, I'm ready to get in there and plant, I'm ready to donate, I'm ready to do whatever. This is really, really important to our community, and it makes us special. You see, I moved here from Vermont, which you may have heard of as a beautiful place, well, I picked this town out of all the other towns around Madison that I could have moved to, and I bought a house here, right on Main Street, 'cause I thought it was special, I thought it was historic, and I thought it was beautiful. So I'm asking you to listen to us and to honor that, and to think about how it will bring people to our town. Okay, now for Hank.
I would like to see in the garden, a place to, um, relax, sit in the, under the historical trees, and be able to have shade, I, I want to see art, and I would like to see, um, out of my dining room window, things that I would appreciate, I would like a garden, um, I would like to smell, the smell of grass and flowers when I walk outside in, um, to the plot, and yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next.
Good afternoon, my name is Isabel Lavelle, I live in 380 Ash Street, and, um, I normally take my kids, I have been taking my kids all the time to different events, uh, that I'm interested in, regarding everything to be outside. Several times I have, I normally go to Stoughton, to Fitchburg, because they have plenty of activities out there, they have very nice parks, and we end up eating over there. So in this case, I think that it will be something really good for Oregon to have an open space, a safe open space right in downtown, where, uh, we can bike, we can do, uh, we don't have any, any transportation needed for young and adults to be there, to go there, and also enjoy the different events that can be, uh, planned over there. And I'm thinking on, um, everything related to, for example, expos, festivals, art, uh, art events, and, um, having their food trucks, I saw the, the plan, and there, there will be space for some tents, food trucks, I think that that will be a great, um, also income, thinking that the park will not provide too much income to the village. If that is the thought, I think that it's not, it's not reality, because in the long run, in the middle, middle and long run, they will keep bringing more people to, uh, to Oregon downtown, to, um, enforce all the local businesses that we have, that are very nice, that we need to enjoy more, uh, all the local businesses that we won't need to go out to another town or another city to, to spend our money over there, when we can spend it here at home, having good events, and who knows, we may probably be like, uh, nuclear with the ice festival, it's like, no, it's not nuclear, sorry, uh, well, I forgot the name of this, uh, bringing more people to Oregon and enjoy, especially now that we will have more fields for, um, baseball, soccer, and everything else, I think that it will be a good addition, and the village will still be, uh, earning some money from now on, uh, with all the, with all these events in the tents and, uh, the carts. Thank you, and especially our local businesses that we need to support.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, anybody else?
My name is Linda Stoggeberg, and I only have a question for you. When will you ever have an opportunity to save a 235-year-old tree in this city? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else?
Hello, my name is Mara Comblin, sorry, there's wire in my teeth if I sound weird. Um, there's plenty of places in town to stick few new houses, this property, on the other hand, is special and has beautiful trees, and it's central to every other part of downtown, may as well do something for the community there.
Can, can we get your address?
2423 White Oak Trail.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else?
Hi, I'm Stephanie Powers, and I've lived here over 75 years.
Stephanie, what's your address?
413 Jamesville Street.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to see a park on North Main Street, because there's so much value there with the trees, and I know there's a lot of volunteers and a lot of donations who will be sending in, like Copkes, I know I've talked to him, and they would give shrubs and some flowers, and I think we need something like that. We've got enough houses, but, and they're fine, but right downtown, it would be really neat, and it would draw people in. We've got Hy-Vee, which opens tomorrow, and we've got Culvers, I mean, people would come in and they would eat in our, uh, town, rather than going, like she said, Madison or anywhere else, and like Monroe, we could have a cheese festival or ice, anything, you know? There's so much value in that land, but I would hate to see it used up completely, you know, with housing, we've got enough, we'll need new schools, it just doesn't make sense.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Stephanie. Anybody else? Greg, I'll turn it over.
Okay, thank you. Move on to, um, item three, I, eight, proposed amendments to Village of Ordinance Comprehensive Plan related to future land use designations for future phases of the Autumn Ridge subdivision from recreational business to planned, uh, neighborhood and Oregon Parks neighborhood, duplex lots two, four, eight, and nine, from two-family residential to mixed residential. This time of the presentation to, for the proposed amendments.
Good evening, my name is Sonia Kreisel with Vandewell &amp; Associates Consulting Planner, I'll be covering these next couple of items on the agenda, and just an overview comment, um, for the public's information and for yours, how the two different agenda items work together. First, we're going to cover, um, the parcel-specific amendments for the 2023 cycle of comprehensive plan amendments, and there are two of them, those are listed on the agenda, um, after that, then we'll talk about our, um, sort of kickoff of the larger project, which is that statutory 10-year comprehensive plan update, as well as the update to the, uh, Park and Recreation Plan. So that being said, um, this first item, uh, as I mentioned, is to address two proposed, uh, parcel-specific land use amendments. The two amendments, um, are listed here on the map, and I'll go through them, uh, but generally, um, this process will look familiar, um, to a lot of you on the board and the Plan Commission, we just concluded a similar process last fall, um, I think in August or September. We're starting the 2023 cycle, um, early this year, because we do have two proposed amendments at the table, um, that are time-sensitive, and then we are also doing that larger 10-year project update, um, throughout the rest of the year, where we could potentially accommodate other amendments if they come up later in the year. First, uh, what we do typically in the process is kick things off here with a joint meeting of these two bodies, uh, the purpose is to formally adopt a public participation plan, and that signals to the public that these amendments are coming forward, and it also provides notice about the types of public input opportunities that will be available to people, um, and it also gives you, as the board members and Plan Commissioners, an introduction to what the requested amendments are. We can ask questions and have discussion, but there will also be opportunities in the future, uh, one of our next steps is to, uh, publish a 30-day, uh, public notice in the newspaper, and that meets statutory requirements, um, that'll be published in the official newspaper, and then we'll also send notices to adjoining and overlapping jurisdictions, so townships, the school district, et cetera, um, notifying people of these two requested amendments. Um, so again, that's just an overview of the process, um, now I'll just, uh, orient you to the two requested amendments. Uh, I think the first one listed on the agenda in the order is regarding, um, future phases of development in a residential subdivision called Autumn Ridge, here at the southern part of the community, um, and what you're looking at here is the future land use map from the comprehensive plan, the colors reflect existing conditions, so the green, um, shown in this area is what the current land use designation is, and that's recreational business, um, the parcels are outlined in red, uh, that would be subject of this potential amendment. These are currently utilized as golf course, uh, for their existing land use. Uh, the Village Board has heard from the proposed developer in this area of a concept plan for future phases of the Autumn Ridge Residential Subdivision, um, and there has also been a neighborhood meeting, uh, to discuss initial plans for that. This is the first step in that process to kind of begin, uh, begin all of the other, um, approvals that would be reviewed, um, in this potential development. I just wanted to speak to the timing of this, um, the reason that we are addressing this comp plan amendment now, uh, is because parts of this area do need to go through the Regional Planning Commission for an urban service area amendment, so that's CARPSY, um, and a couple of pieces in this, including some of the area outlined, uh, would need to be brought into the Village of Oregon Urban Service Area in order to move forward. Part of that process is to ensure that, um, the development is consistent with the village's comprehensive plan. So we do need to do this first, uh, right now, if you went to CARPSY, it would show residential on recreational business, and that would not be consistent, so what, uh, is being proposed here from the developer is to change that from recreational business to planned neighborhood. If this is approved, then the CARPSY Urban Service Area Amendment can move forward, um, with that consistency element, and then there would also be all sorts of other opportunities to review the development itself, in terms of plating, annexation, rezoning, all of that kind of stuff would come later. So that's the request here specifically, and, again, these areas outlined in red. The second amendment is, I'll zoom out a little bit for context, um, over here on the west side of Oregon, and this is in the Oregon Parks neighborhood, the request is to amend, I believe it's four lots, yes, four lots, these are outlined here, again, in red, and I'll zoom in, their current designation is two-family in the comprehensive plan, and a interested developer is looking to change those to mixed residential, and the reason for that is just to accommodate the type of housing that they are contemplating, so they're looking at multiple structures on a lot, where the units would be, um, there would be two units within a building, but one would be on the ground floor, and one would be on the upper floor, so kind of a more traditional two-flat style, um, but accommodating up to four units per lot. Sorry. Um, so that is the purpose of that amendment, and, um, that's kind of the overview, happy to take questions, um, but again, the purpose of tonight's meeting would be for the Plan Commission to provide a recommendation on the public participation plan, and then the Village Board would act on that as well.
All right. Great. I guess, first of all, we should ask if anybody has any questions, uh, from the Plan Commission or from the Village Board. I guess not, huh? Okay. Then we need a motion recommending the Village Board. Then we need a motion recommending the village board approval of resolution number PC-23-01. Recommend adoption of the Village of Oregon Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Public Participation Plan as presented. Do we have a motion?
Some.
Do we have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. Now village board, resolution twenty-three dash oh-two, adopting Village of, Village of Oregon Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Public Participation Plan. Do we get a motion, a second? I saw Derek and Jenna, any discussion from us? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Then moving on to item B here, if that's okay with you. We have the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Update and Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan Update. The purpose of this agenda item is to provide a little bit of a project kickoff to kind of orient people to the process and the schedule of what these projects are. And to also orient the public to the opportunities that will be coming up through the rest of the year regarding these two projects. So I'll go through a little bit of a presentation and also ask for some feedback from the plan commission and the village board. But again, just like our last item, there is a formal request to take action on the public participation plan. So that's just like what you did on the last agenda item for the 2023 amendments. The public participation plan looks really similar. I'll just point out that there are a few extra bullet points in section three of that public participation plan that outline more specifically the specialized input opportunities that would happen with these bigger projects. So that being said, recently, the, the village approved contracts with Vandewell &amp; Associates to help facilitate these two major updates of these planning documents. The comprehensive plan by state law has to be updated in that more full and comprehensive nature once every ten years. So that's what we're looking at here. The park and recreation plan gets updated every five years. One of the main purposes of that is to keep you eligible for DNR grants and of course, to stay relevant and updated on park facilities and recommendations. So just a real quick overview, I'll breeze through some of these slides quickly. Comprehensive Plan is the village's long-range planning document. It addresses all sorts of elements of development and growth within the community. There are nine specific elements that are listed in state law, so this is what your plan currently addresses and what we expect the update to address as well. The purpose is to identify areas appropriate for development and/or preservation over the next twenty years. Twenty years is the planning horizon identified in state law and to recommend appropriate types of land uses for specific areas in the city. It can help direct different types of growth to appropriate areas, as well as identify transportation or community facilities that are needed to support that type of development. There are also detailed strategies to implement the plan. Those are things that the community works with on a monthly basis, things like zoning ordinances, official maps, TIF districts. Those types of things are examples of tools that you use to implement the strategies and recommendations of a comprehensive plan. If you had to take the whole document and boil it down into one image, a lot of people would consider that to be this, which is your future land use map. So this takes all of the colors of the different types of land use and development and maps it in appropriate areas in the community. And then when you use those tools, like zoning, to implement the plan by state law, it's required to be consistent. So you look to this map, just like we did on that previous agenda item, to see if your zoning decision can be allowed and this is how things get implemented over the twenty-year period. In Oregon specifically, the original plan was adopted a few years after that nineteen ninety-nine smart growth law, adopted in two thousand and four. There was a large update in two thousand and thirteen. You do your frequent annual amendment cycles and we're coming up on this additional ten-year cycle now with a larger update. Currently, these are some of the overarching goals listed in Oregon's comprehensive plan. These are big picture, that's what a comprehensive plan often is. Some of them listed are here are to promote diverse business development, promote the school system and excellence in schools, encourage smart growth, which essentially means utilizing land available where, for example, it's adjacent to existing infrastructure, utilities, and transportation, and a mix of uses without increasing the tax and infrastructure burden. So that's the purpose of smart growth. Looking to ensure a balance of affordable housing, or in other words, housing that's appropriate for all different people in your community. Protect community character and then protect environmental resources. With this update process, you will get a new document, it will look different, it will be refreshed. As opposed to these single parcel amendments that we do, it's a chance to step back and see if your plan is still guiding you in the direction and the vision that you see for the community. It's an opportunity also to update all of the data that drive the plan and drive the recommendations of it. So we'll be using all of the new census data, looking at population projections, housing projections, and getting updates on all of that, looking at kind of big-picture economic data and updating your map set, looking at transportation, making sure everything's current. We'll also be looking at new overarching community issues and opportunities, develop new goals, objectives, policies, and strategies. And we'll be getting new public input. The same is also available to the public to provide that type of commentary and feedback, is the plan still aligned with what, what the community would like to see as well. So there are a lot of opportunities to provide that feedback. One of the pieces that was approved in the scope of work for the comprehensive plan was a nice graphic document like this. Comprehensive plans are typically long narrative documents, there's a lot of policies in there and sometimes it's easier to digest that down into a one-pager for people that want kind of a quick overview to understand the general goals of the community. So this is just an example from the Village of Mount Horeb that recently completed an update, community character envisioning statement, and then some of the big-picture goals are highlighted. This is a nice way for the public to easily access the information that's in the plan. Just an overview of the schedule, can kind of be broken down into four main parts. Here in the early part of the year, which I'll just call spring, we've already begun to update all of the document data using that census information that I mentioned. And we're beginning to plan for and collect public input. The idea, of course, here is to get all of that public input before we rewrite the goals and objectives. We want to get that upfront. Then there are opportunities later to check in with the public on how the drafting of the plan is going. So data collection, getting feedback from you and staff early on in this process, and then moving into some of the key public input opportunities. Coming up here, February twenty-eighth, we're going to have a series of focus group meetings. These are by invite only. The purpose of that is to target specific groups that work on issues in the community and have a very targeted and small-group conversation. So there are a variety of groups that we'll be meeting with on that day. Then contrary to that, March ninth is open to the entire community, an opportunity to come in and have a workshop and do some public visioning and address really big-picture feedback on the comprehensive plan. So that, that will cover spring. We'll also be starting to write the plan document then. In the summer, drafts of the plan will start to come forward to the plan commission, so we'll go through a couple of iterations, move through revisions over that time period. And then in fall, we'll be moving into the public open house, an opportunity to look at how the draft is coming together and get that touch point with the public again, and then eventually adoption towards the end of the year. When we talk about the other plan, the park and recreation plan, you'll see that the two schedules align. So that was an opportunity for efficiencies for the community. For example, on February twenty-eighth, those focus group meetings will cover both plans. So again, we're just putting in as many of those efficiencies as possible throughout the year planning process. I won't spend too much time on these, but just to highlight of some of the initial data that we're starting to collect and that you'll see explored further in the plan. Population trends, Village of Oregon has grown a lot in the last couple of decades, so fifty-four percent over this last twenty-two-year period, so over twenty percent per decade. So that's a pretty quick amount of growth compared to surrounding communities and we'll explore what that looks like further in terms of projections. Just a real quick note, demographics in every community do change over time. Here in Oregon, you can see that there's some diversification in terms of race happening. Two-point-four percent of the community identified as non-white in the year two thousand and we are at eight percent now. Like other communities, Oregon's population is aging, so you can see the orange bars, there are greater proportions of people over the age of fifty-five in the community. Housing stock, about three-fourths of the community was built before the year two thousand, with this upper-right quadrant being the newer housing that's been built in the community. Housing cost burden speaks to the issue of affordability, so twenty-three percent of all households within the community are housing cost burden. That's specifically defined by HUD, Housing and Urban Development, as households that spend more than thirty percent of their income on gross housing costs. So that's another example of something that will be explored further. Economic trends, this just talks about, Oregon, twenty-one percent of those employed within the village also live in the community. So perhaps an opportunity to provide more housing for people that want to live here, that work here as well. And then the second point, eighty-nine percent of residents do leave the community and work outside of the village. So Oregon does provide labor force to the region and, you know, perhaps it's indicating that this is a desirable place to live, even if the job is not within the community itself. So a lot of these topics that we've mentioned are key for the update. We've heard already a little bit about, of course, village growth, what are the, what is the vision, what would the community like to see there? Infill and redevelopment opportunities, not all growth happens at the edge of town. So looking at key infill and redevelopment opportunities is another way to accommodate future projection, population projections. Housing, environmental sustainability, character, infrastructure issues, these are all things that will be addressed. So, I don't want to talk too much, I want to provide a little bit of an opportunity for the two groups to give a little bit of feedback. Again, this is the kickoff meeting, so we don't have to get into a lot of detail, but what we're looking at is to hear from you on some of the big-picture priorities or things that you expect or would like to be considered in this process. So I have four really big-picture questions, anyone can chime in from the plan commission or the board. So in general, I'd like to hear from you, what are some things that have changed over the last decade in Oregon? And if it's helpful to get a preview of all four questions, I can do that too.
Please do.
Yes? Okay, great. What has changed over the last decade? And then we'll also ask, ask what are the most pressing existing issues that need to be addressed? What are the top opportunities that we should consider? These are all very big-picture. So changes, existing issues, top opportunities. And then question four, what key areas would you like to see new development or redevelopment? And then finally, what is your vision for the future of Oregon? What, what do you think the community should look like in the next ten to twenty years? And one more broad, broad question, anything else the planning process should consider? So these are all very big-picture, feel free to comment on any of them, but we can just kind of start back up at the top.
Great, questions, anybody?
Anybody have any question on the plan commission? Any comments regarding what has changed over the last decade in Oregon?
I, I have one question about your process. Will it include some comparative analysis of similar-sized communities in both Dane County and Wisconsin and other areas?
Yes, every data table that we have will compare to other communities in the region, comparable communities, and then it will also compare to the county and to the state.
The other question I've got, kind of piggybacking on that, is what efforts are going to be made to reach out to people that may not come to a public event or gathering? I don't want this to become a sort of squeaky wheel kind of thing, small minority leading the charge. I'd like to get a vision for the entire community as much as possible or snapshot.
Yeah, that's a good point. We'll work closely with village staff to figure out how we'll advertise for each event. So the first one upcoming is, like I mentioned, the focus groups. So we're working really closely with not just planning and community development staff, but all village department heads for input on that. And then, for example, the community workshop, we can talk about different ways to make sure we're addressing all different populations, but we do, of course, the typical things, a press release, a flyer, and then, you know, take feedback on other opportunities.
Have you mentioned the survey too? I know that's kind of more.
Yeah, yep, so as part of the park and recreation plan, which we'll touch on, we're also doing a survey. And this will be an online survey, more specific to those park questions, so that will run online. For people who can't make it to the workshops and the in-person events, welcome to provide input. It is targeted more towards the park and recreation plan. And of course, there's always opportunity to send in email comments and attend and, and comment on any agenda at a public meeting.
Anybody, board, comments, questions? Yeah, Amanda?
Are these the types of questions you're going to ask the public? Is that?
Yeah, the, things will be framed, I'm asking you, yep, I'm asking you tonight for some big-picture feedback. What are your hopes as a village board and as a plan commission? These are just some prompts. What has changed, what are issues and opportunities, what is your vision?
Okay.
Speaking for myself, I'd like to take some time to contemplate, contemplate and then perhaps reply in writing.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than on the spot.
Yep.
Okay, yeah. Amanda and then Mike?
Yeah, sorry, I just, I was going to say then, as far as answering, you know, big picture, one of the things I see Oregon changing, I see kind of in a state of flux, trying to become, trying to change from a bedroom community into a place that has its own amenities, where people want to stay and, and spend money to, you know, help our economy. And that tremendous growth is sort of fueling that. And so we're, we're in this changing place right now, so that's kind of the overview that I would present.
Okay.
Mike?
For me, one of the big challenges over the next period is how we redevelop our downtown. We're clearly geographically limited on the amount of space that we have in our downtown area. And finding a way to, to get parking into our downtown and mixed residential and commercial space and eliminating perhaps some of our surface lots and allowing infill building of commercial enterprises with housing above seems to me a huge challenge for, for really solidifying the downtown as, as an anchor for our community.
Anybody else? Yeah, Derek?
I'd just say as far as issues that need to be addressed, existing issues that need to be addressed, I would say affordable housing is the top one. And to kind of piggyback off that, if we're talking about what opportunities the village should consider over the course of the next decade, the southeast expansion, I think, needs to happen sooner rather than later to kind of help address with those affordable housing issues. And I think that should be kind of a focus going forward.
Yeah, Carleen?
Certainly, there's been a lot of new people moving into the Village of Oregon. I'm one of those, I lived in the area, but I moved in, in the last three years and it's, there's been much more, much more growth, I think, than some, some folks were expecting as far as new residential developments, at least from the, my neighbors. I think the other, one of the challenges, I agree completely with what Derek had to say, and I think also we had this ongoing water issue. And how our planning, especially for building, building buildings goes, really has to be very thoughtful because water doesn't care where you build stuff, it's going to go where it's going to go. And so thinking about how we do that in a way that is environmentally sustainable and proactive, I think is, is really important.
Okay. All right.
Great. I think, I think that's it, nobody said. Again, I think, you know, being put on the spot to try to come up with ideas, still not close enough, how's that? Eat it, right? Yeah.
Exactly, like an ice cream cone.
Bingo. One of the things that, like, like Phil said, that you're trying to, to come up with an idea, as we just got put, sort of, so to speak, put on the spot. Give us a little more time and I think that certainly our, our plan commission's been, come up with some great ideas and I- with some great ideas. And obviously, the village board has a lot of different thoughts of what they want to do. So.
Yep.
That will materialize, I think, over the next couple of months.
Sure. Thank you. Yep. Just a good opportunity to get the conversation started, start to throw out some of those big picture, big picture trends. So no pressure, expectation in that regard whatsoever. So anything else?
Can we get a copy of this? Because it's not in our packet. And that would be really helpful to think about what you've just told us.
Yep. Send that to Elise.
Yeah, Mike?
Is now the time to ask a couple of questions about process? Because I've never been through this before.
Yeah.
So how are, I mean, we've, we've obviously had a number of controversial issues in the village, where the library goes and 249 North Main and other things. There's clear that we have different interest groups in the village. How are we choosing people for the focus groups? Are we making sure that, that the variety of diverse viewpoints in, in the village are included?
Yeah, I can answer that. Been working on kind of compiling that list. We'll have eight different focus groups. So some topics are seniors, youth, health and housing, families, economic development, arts and culture. And with all of those, I've gotten feedback from a lot of department heads and village staff about folks that they reach, whether it's, you know, through the senior center or, you know, crossing guards that work for the police department, some families that have, you know, children with special needs or represent underrepresented groups. So there's a lot of kind of overlap of people of different backgrounds, income levels, places where they live within the village that are scattered around that list. And so we'll be sending out those invites hopefully tomorrow. Save the date and hopefully get somewhere between six and 12 confirmed respondents for those groups. But again, understanding that that's not, we, we certainly won't catch everybody. And that's not the intention for the focus groups, but there will be other opportunities for everybody to participate. But yeah, kind of people who are active voices and leaders within the community and cover those various topics. The youth group, I will mention, we're working with the social studies teacher at the high school, still working, getting the logistics figured out. But we'll be hopefully coming into his classroom and working with those students. So those will be kind of, hopefully, again, this scenario of folks across the village and maybe live outside the village, too, but hearing right from the, the youth themselves.
How do you foresee, I mean, we've got a number of studies coming up this year. We've got the stormwater study. We've got the bicycle transportation study. We've got the transportation committee reporting back with their recommendations, the sustainability, I mean, this is a committee reporting back their recommendations. How do you foresee these being incorporated into the comprehensive plan?
Lots, lots going on. A comprehensive plan is often referred to as an umbrella plan. So it is supposed to be really big picture and encompassing of all of those things. The various plans, just like zoning, you use them to get into a finer level of detail. So the bike and ped plan, for example, that might address very specific routes or very specific issues on that topic. The comprehensive plan is going to be much more general. So we can talk about each of those topics as we move through it. But when we look at the transportation chapter, for example, if there are recommendations or strategies in there that are outdated, or new information that's come through that bike and ped planning process, that would be a good time to work as much as possible to align them. It's also a good way to kind of get that input from each of those detailed plans into it. Since not everyone will be able to participate in the comprehensive plan, for whatever reason, if they don't come and provide that input, there are these other planning processes that are happening that we can learn from. So I think it'll be good that they're aligning at the same time. But again, the general idea is that the comprehensive plan is more general. And these specific plans get into the finer level of detail.
Yeah, I was more concerned with the timing. Some of these reports don't even come in till end of July or perhaps later. And, and the comprehensive plan at that point is probably in your second draft. So another question that I had is between the workshops and the surveys and the public open house, the workshop and surveys you have slated, I think, for March, and the public open house is on October, and in between, there's, there's three drafts of, of the, the comprehensive plan. I forget if it was three drafts of the park plan or, or how many. That seems, what are the opportunities for public input between March and October? Because that's a lot of work being done in there.
We have the, the specific events that are more facilitated. We purposely put those up front, again, because we don't want to just guess at what should be in the plan. We want to hear from the community and then use that to shape the drafting. But then the key opportunities throughout that drafting season of summer would be open meetings. So when those drafts are reviewed at a plan commission meeting, for example, those, as usual, are open to the public, and we can, we'll also have a, a webpage specifically posted online that drafts of the plan will put up there as soon as possible, make sure they're available. These things are often also accompanied by a short summary, memos before plan commission meetings, because it's a lot to ask of any one person to read a full draft and come with a lot of feedback. So we try to make it more easily digestible. But that's the primary opportunity through that period.
Will you be accepting online comment, then, or?
I don't think there's an online comment form, but working with village staff, questions can be asked at any time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've been kind of, I've been sitting over here stewing about the first question that you had put up there, the general one. And we've gone through the comprehensive plan a couple of times. And I think the one thing that has been successful is that flexibilities that we have created in the comp plan that we have right now. The reality is, we don't have a crystal ball. And if anybody does, I want to come over to your house and pick my lottery numbers. But I think that what we try to do, when we've done this in the past, is, is come up with enough of a framework that the community holds as value, but yet enough flexibility. Because like you had mentioned, we've grown by what, 50, 20%?
Fifty-four percent.
Fifty-four percent in 20 years. You know, you've got to have something that's fairly flexible to be able to manage those changes. And I think that we've been able to do that. So I guess that's why I asked about how can we get a cross section of a community? Because the community that we knew 20 years ago, 10 years ago, isn't the same one that we know now or will be in 20 years. So knowing and understanding how those things have changed and project how they will change is something that I, I will have value in as we try to work through the comp plan.
Yeah, kind of following that, I mean, several of us were here 20 years ago, and we began, began this process the last time. And there wasn't a lot to go on then. It was a new process, a new directive from the state that we had to do this. And, and so we had to guess at a lot of things or, you know, wing a lot of things. I'm curious if there, if part of the process is, we kind of take a, a good look at the old comp plan and, and see, you know, how our projections were 20 years ago, what did we miss, and what did we hit, and what things went right and what things weren't so good. It's worthy to note that when we finished the original comp plan, we went, I think, six or eight years and did not do an amendment. I mean, it, it really followed pretty well. But then we had a major recession and a housing boom and a pandemic. And now we're at the, the cycle where we're, we're doing updates more than once a year. So the plan has definitely fallen behind with current trends and current ideas and current needs of, you know, different types of businesses and housing and things like that. So, but to, to look at the old plan and just, just see, like I say, what, what, what we did well and what we didn't do as well, that I think would be useful. I, for one, come to planning commission every month, and we're largely a reactionary body. And people bring us ideas and they want approval for it. And we react to what, what people put in front of us. This, this process is our opportunity to be visionary and where, you know, where do we want to see the village become. So it's worth, worth the effort. And, and I'm hoping that when this new plan is done, it, it holds up for a good number of years and doesn't need, you know, multiple annual updates for quite some time.
Yep. Good point. That's one way that we'll frame a lot of the conversation, I think, too. When we're looking at drafts before the plan commission, we'll start working everything in red line to track changes and look at, you know, past, past growth and projected growth, and then ask, is this still a goal or policy that you think is relevant? We'll point out key policy questions, things that are changing, things that are new, and ask for directed feedback on that, too. Trying to condense it down into points that we can get feedback on specifically.
I think we are. I think, anybody else have any questions? I, you know, I asked the plan commission, but the village board has made their contributions. So I guess they went, I should say, I guess. We'll move on then, for our part, the plan commission. We need a motion to approve resolution number PC dash 23 dash 02, recommending the adoption of, to the village board, to the Village of Oregon, comprehensive plan, 2023 plan update, public participation plan.
So move.
In a second.
Second?
In a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. All right, village board. We'll do resolution number 2303, adoption of the village board and comprehensive plan, 2023 plan update, public participation plan. If we get a motion in a second. Phil and Mike, any discussion, any other discussion? Okay. See none? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Okay.
At this point, we're going to have a motion to adjourn to the plan commission.
So move.
Greg? I'm sorry.
Wait, I'm following the agenda.
The, the park plan update.
Well, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Since we are, again, doing these efficiencies as a kickoff meeting for both of the planning documents.
Where did I miss this? Where's that?
It's right here.
I think it's on the kickoff one. Maybe, let's check.
Well, that's fine. I'm sorry.
We just approved 2302.
Right here on B.
I was going to say, you had a mistake there.
Comprehensive plan and corp update.
The public participation plan is only for the comp plan.
Yep, that's correct. Thanks, Mark.
I don't see it in here either.
It's here.
I don't think it's on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. So this is just a couple of minutes, again, to orient you to the other plan that will be undertaking this year.
It's not on the agenda.
Excuse me, point of order, Randy.
Yeah.
I don't believe this is on the agenda.
I don't think it is.
So if we're going to approve it.
It's on.
Thank you. I wasn't wrong. That's good.
2B.
It is on the agenda, under 3B, 2023 comprehensive plan update and comprehensive outdoor recreation plan update, the I project kickoff presentation. The two resolutions are only specifically related to the public participation plan for the comp plan.
Can you give a page?
It's page one.
We did those.
And what's the item number? 3B?
3B.
No, we did those before.
3BI.
That's project kickoff. No, I'm sorry. The village board.
I don't see it.
3BI.
I think they both say the, the.
The, the resolution numbers are wrong.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
How about streaming to the word park?
3B.
3B.
Yep. It's not park. It's called comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. So right in the title of 3B, 2023 comprehensive plan update. So the resolutions, we really should have approved the resolutions after her presentation.
We skipped on.
But there's no. There's no resolutions.
There is no resolution for the corp.
This is just for information only for your park plan.
Oh, it's just information.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the numbers for the resolutions.
Just want to make sure that we're legit.
It's just for project kickoff presentation.
All right.
Okay.
We got it all?
Thank you.
Let me look foolish. That's all right.
And people wonder about their.
Yeah, really. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Yep, we're all good. So again, this is just really, really quick overview information so that people know what's coming. Very similar information that we just shared for the comprehensive plan, but we're simultaneously updating your park and recreation plan. This, unlike the comp plan, this is an every five-year update. This is a shorter document. It's more specific to parks and rec. The five-year update keeps you eligible for the DNR grants. And just kind of getting into some of this, very similar things that we'll be updating, all of the data, all of the goals, objectives, and strategies. Come up with new recommendations, new facility improvements, things, again, specific to the park. Developing an implementation action list with funding sources for potential park improvements. So that's the type of content that we're looking at here in this document. The schedule looks very similar. And again, I've broken it down into seasons, doing the public input upfront. The kickoff meeting is here tonight with that little arrow. Next, we'll be doing focus group meetings and the online survey. We do have some dates picked out for the survey to run. That would be at the beginning of March, and it would conclude just before the school district goes into the spring break period. So again, working with village staff to advertise that and make sure information's posted on the website and provided to all of you. Spring plan drafting, draft reviews in the summer, public review of the draft in the fall, and adoption, again, trying to coordinate that with the comp plan in December. So tonight here, we're meeting as the village board and the plan commission, but the, and, and both bodies will ultimately take action on the park and recreation plan. But the parks board also plays an active role in this. So they will meet at least four times to provide that specific detail on this document. And they'll have a separate kickoff meeting on February 14th. So we'll go into a little bit more detail with them at that time. Here's some discussion questions, again, kind of thrown out here in case anyone wants to comment. We can take the same approach that we did with the comprehensive plan if you'd like. Otherwise, this is an opportunity to just start the conversation. Top priorities that you'd like addressed in the park and rec plan, if there's anything you'd really like to share tonight. Recreational opportunities that should be explored. An open-ended question, are there enough parks? Are, do we need more? Are there other opportunities that we should explore? So all of this, again, will be backed by data, public input, and we'll work through it with the plan drafts. But you're welcome to provide comment now if you'd like.
Has anybody polled the athletic organizations within the village? Youth softball, youth baseball, youth football, men's league softball, pickleball, pick a, pick a game, pick a sport, to find out what they have for facilities, what they use for facilities, and what is currently proposed or being used for facilities?
So in our focus groups, two others that I didn't mention are active recreation and passive recreation. So a lot of those groups you mentioned will be covered in our active recreation group. And again, knowing that we won't catch, capture everybody, just they won't be available. So there will be the survey and other opportunities to participate. But yeah, we're specifically reaching out to those groups. And there'll be questions about facilities and growth and kind of, you know, what do you need? What do you have now? Is it sufficient, both in quantity and quality of facilities?
Thank you.
Are we at that point?
Yep. So if no further comments, just the last slide, next steps. We've covered this a couple of times now, but I'll see the park board on February 14th for a kickoff meeting. We're still working on the data collection, and we'll be getting into all the detail of these public input opportunities. So watch for the project page on the village website. I'll provide the slide deck to Elise to share with all of you. And we're available for questions as we go through the process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice presentation. Appreciate it. Okay, plan commission, we have a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for letting us come down.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Oh, well, that's your call.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take a break, everybody. And then we're gonna come, we're going into closed session. So everybody's gonna have to clear out for closed session. It'll just be the village board. So everybody's gonna have to clear out for closed session. It'll just be the Village Board.
Park finally comes to our.
Do you want to take, um, eleven B one?
Eleven B one.
Yeah, is that you?
Yeah.
Okay. No, I'm just saying ahead of time before we start.
Is it A and B or A or B or?
Or how about, how about C?
All right. Dan, you ready? Go back. Okay, all right, we're back. So let's go to back to where in open session we'll go to six A, which is two forty-nine, two sixty-seven North Main Street site reuse request for proposal. Staff recommendation motion to approve as presented. And so Elise Martin says you're going to give a little overview first. And then we'll get into some discussion.
Okay, just to let you all know, I do need to leave at seven o'clock.
Yeah.
If you need to continue without me, go ahead because I wanted to let you know. So I did incorporate some changes, some updates from comments at the December nineteenth meeting. So that language has been incorporated into the RFP. There was some rewording of the scoring matrix as well as some of the goals. And a couple clarifying points about kind of how the schedule and how respondents would be handled. So I did have a couple of questions that were sent to me by a few groups interested in submitting the RFP and felt that I wasn't the best person to answer them, that they were a little bit more directed to the board as policy questions. Some are, I think, can be inferred by the selection criteria, sort of what are the goals. For example, on the selection criteria, ability to, you know, kind of provide financial benefit to the village isn't at the top of the list, but it's, it's in there and has its own kind of weight given to it. So regardless, the policy questions that I thought would be worth discussing with the board are listed there in those four bullet points. Can respondents to the RFP submit more than one proposal, for example, on their own and then another with a partnering group with some kind of a joint collaboration? Is there a possibility that the board might come up with their own solution and kind of mix and match proposals together? How will proposals from groups of very financial means be weighed against one another? So for example, nonprofit versus a for-profit private developer? And then does the board want to predetermine the location or amount of land to be dedicated as public park? Or leave this open-ended to allow greater flexibility and creativity from respondents? And then I did update the timeline just since we've moved forward a couple of weeks. I wanted to make sure that we left time for respondents. And then again, just happy to go through this as many times as we need until we feel confident in the language of the RFP. So happy to hear questions and discussion and we can make further revisions and present this next week again if needed.
All right. So I think we have two options. Someone can make a motion to approve as presented. Or we can have some discussion first. And then I'm sure there'll be some kind of motion in a second out of that. So what do we prefer?
Move to pursue, move to approve as presented.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. All right. So, so we're, so we got a motion in a second. We're at discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to vote no because I do, I want to discuss these policy questions that Elise brought up.
You can do that now.
Okay, all right, okay.
It's on the table.
Just checking.
Yeah.
That was, thank you.
She's on the table.
Okay. Well, so, so starting off with the first bullet point, I would say yes, I don't think we should limit how many RFPs anyone can submit. I think groups could submit multiple. I'd like to see what ideas people have. So, I mean, open-ended. I don't, I don't think we're put a limit on it though. So it's just out there and anybody can submit for, you know, if they had one idea for the whole space, one idea for part of the space or, you know, other, with other organizations, doesn't matter. Like I think I'm okay with that. And then.
Can we just go to one question at a time?
Yeah, that's fine. Let's do that. Yes.
And so are you going to recognize us or are we just talking?
No, I'll recognize you. I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. Absolutely. I want to say I agree, I agree with Amanda that, that we should let people submit however many they want as long as they're making the timeline. And, and if they present with another organization, you know, maybe that organization wouldn't submit without, for the whole property. So I think that that makes a lot of sense to be able to have multiple proposals.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yes, you may.
If you're going to handle these one at a time, if I could make a suggestion, we have a motion on the floor, but if you want to make an amendment to anything or include anything, could we do a motion? And then.
Yeah, and Candy, just to clarify, I don't think there's anything in the RFP right now that would prohibit somebody from submitting multiple proposals. So if you all are in favor of allowing that flexibility, we don't need to change anything.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want.
And it's not uncommon on, on a project, like when we publicly bid a project, we don't limit subcontractors. And I mean, a lot of them, a lot of them will list paint and oil in for asphalt or lane for asphalt or whatever. It's, it's really pretty normal. But they'll be, give their numbers to multiple contractors. Or in this situation, multiple proposal preparers.
Okay.
Respondents.
All right. So Amanda, were you done or you?
Yeah, I'm done on this point.
Yeah, go ahead, Jenna.
I was just going to say I'm also in favor of allowing organizations to submit more than one RFP to think that will allow different partnerships to happen in.
Okay. Yeah, Derek?
I would also agree with that. And in fact, I would even encourage people because if we can get some collaborative partnerships, so as Elise said, everyone's a little bit disappointed. I think that would be for the benefit of the entire community.
I think that quote's going to be written on my gravestone.
Yeah, I think it is.
It was actually a Martin quote to start just to say.
If it is, I'll go up there with a chisel.
It's going to haunt me for the rest of my life. Yeah.
Yeah, Mike?
But it's true.
Just a, a question that, that I'm, I guess, not understanding. I support having as many proposals as you want. So this isn't related to that. But this whole concept of partnership. Aren't your bidders and who is coming in on this kind of confidential? And how would partnerships actually work? I mean, you don't know who's necessarily who's bidding or who isn't. How would anyone be able to identify a prospective mate? I guess would be the term when you don't know who's in the room.
This, this isn't a closed bid. So when we do public construction projects, they have to be closed bid. But this is, this information will all be open to the public and available in an open records request. As soon as they're submitted.
Yeah. Mike, do you mean before a submission happens? How would you even know who else is interested? So you can call me and I, I have a list of, you know, interested partners and, and people that have shared that they're comfortable with their, their information being shared. I don't share contact information, obviously, without someone's permission. So if there was a group that said, I'm interested in partnering with the senior housing organization. Do you think there's anybody that, you know, plans on submitting or would be interested in the area that might be a good match? And I would ask that senior housing organization, are you okay with me sharing your contact info before doing so? So a couple of groups have already asked me if I could help with that. And I said that I could to the extent that I'm allowed to. But otherwise, I mean, there have been, there's developers that work pretty frequently in the Village of Oregon that, you know, have been to, through the development process and public meetings and stuff too. So I think, you know, hopefully some of those partnerships already exist from people that have just worked in the village already. Otherwise, I'm happy to help to the extent that I can.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't understand that. Thank you.
Yeah, Phil?
Sounds like we are all on agreement to add point one.
Yep. Okay, other discussion? Okay. All right. So we got a motion and a second.
Oh. We kind of those four bullet point questions. So we were, we just went through the first one.
Oh, okay. All right. I thought we were done.
No.
Not quite, huh?
Let me clarify. So does, does the board want language added for bullet item one, two?
No.
I thought Elise said she.
Yeah, I think what's covered in there is allowed and there's language just explaining you need, if there is a partnership, you need to just explain yourself. But there's no limit to the number of responses.
So do nothing.
So we're on, so we're on two, bullet point two now?
No amendment for bullet point one. We're on two now.
Yep. Yep. So this one, again, there's language in the RFP in fine print towards the bottom of page thirty-four of the packet.
Okay.
Not sure if this would fully cover this, but just that, so special notes, the selection criteria and kind of the scorecard we've created are just a starting point. They're not the only factor in Village Ward making their final decision. Projects growing higher are not guaranteed to be the selected project. There's also the last bullet point there. We reserve the right to reject any or all offers or discontinue the RFP process. You know, kind of stop the process altogether. So there isn't a point, I guess, that specifically calls out that we can mix and match. I don't know if I've ever really seen that. And I don't think that would really happen ad hoc in a meeting that, hey, you, hey, you, do you want to work together? You know, there's obviously a long process that goes through with doing a pro forma, understanding what's financially feasible. I could see, again, using the broad umbrella language we have here, the board maybe saying, you know, we like this proposal and this proposal or these organizations. Would you be willing to, you know, spend some time to work together and see if you could come back, you know, with a, a joint proposal? And I think the, the language in here doesn't disallow that. And others that submit, if they're not chosen to move forward, you know, that's just explained here that we reserve the right to reject any proposal that we might like to or move forward with others. And this is all language taken from, majority of it was taken from the city of Verona's RFP for their Verona Avenue Sugar River Elementary redevelopment.
Okay. Everybody okay?
No changes needed, I think, for that one. Depending on if you guys are okay with that.
Yeah.
All right, next.
Okay. Again, I don't think any change needed if you, this is, I guess, more of just a question, but very financial means together. I think I kind of answered this, but with the selection criteria, page thirty-four again, the points, I did reorder and reword these a little bit. But they do add up to a hundred. Jeff, double check for me.
I did.
So the financial benefits for the village is, you know, fifteen out of a hundred points. And obviously, somebody could score, you know, nine points in that category or something. And again, this is, it's going to be a subjective and objective process. So this is just one tool that we could use to kind of provide initial ranking. But ultimately, I think a lot of the, you know, partnerships or experience with the area or ability to meet our goals, you know, some of, all of that will be, I imagine, part of your decision-making. So I think that's addressed. And again, if you're an organization submitting a proposal and perhaps you don't have the resources that another would, it's not like all is lost because perhaps you're bringing a lot more to the table in some of these other categories that somebody else wouldn't. So. Is that okay with everybody?
Tom, okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I think the last question is fairly.
Directed.
Direct, yeah, thanks. So there are, I kind of talked about this before, and I think Mike had brought a motion forward that ended up, we didn't move forward with, but the idea of setting aside land for the park in a specific amount versus kind of leaving it more open-ended. So one thing I wanted to just remind the, the board of is that any development project, whether it's a single-family house being built or apartment project or grocery store, they all have green space requirements per our code. And those range from anywhere from fifteen percent of the site needs to be, remain as green space in the industrial areas to up to fifty percent of the site remains as green space in our residential areas. There are projects that have asked, asked for flexibilities from that. So they have more pavement and a lot of our older industrial areas and commercial areas are paved over more than what our current code would allow. So those are called existing, non-conforming or grandfathered uses. So there is kind of two separate conversations of, do we want to set aside land for a village-owned park? That's its own parcel that's village-owned versus allowing the green space to be part of a development, part of their green space requirement. And, you know, there's language in here about providing access to historic trees, connections to Main Street, et cetera. So kind of a decision about, again, how direct you want that to be. I did look at our park list. I think our smallest park in the village is on Scott Street.
Scott Street.
I think it's about point two acres, just as a point of information. Yeah, I think that's just kind of what I wanted to cover. So more of a direct question for you all to provide some, if we want to give some more direct language in the RFP or leave it open-ended. And again, expressing that these are our goals and weighing and grading that criteria on how well a development meets those goals.
All right. Jenna and then Mike.
Do we, can you explain further? You mentioned that residential area is up to fifty percent of the development needs to be green space. Can you, does that, can you go into that more? Like, does that change based on the density of the project or just more information, I guess? Can you, does that, can you go into that more, like, does that change based on the density of the project or just more information, I guess?
Yeah, so we have, I don't know, fifteen to twenty zoning districts within the village. Each zoning district has all of their requirements that are kind of by right, what's allowed, what's not allowed. These are all the uses that are allowed, these are what's allowed with conditional use permit, here's what's allowed for setbacks and building height and et cetera. One of those requirements is called landscape surface ratio. So depending on the zoning district, there is a landscape surface ratio minimum, so I think the, in general industrial, our kind of business park, a lot of Bur Oak and the west side of Market Street is in the GI district. That by right, again, if there's a new development that comes forward, they would need to have at least fifteen, one-five percent of their lot be green space unless they went through our planned development zoning process and they do the GDP and we approve all those exceptions by right. We've done that many, many times, we do that probably every other month as a GDP, it feels like. All the way, so like industrial is kind of on one end of the spectrum and then our single-family residential zoning districts, for the most part, I believe they are all at fifty, so five-zero percent of the lot would be, again, by right, something coming forward today, we're using our new code that we've had, well, since two thousand and six, but would need to have fifty percent of that lot be area that's pervious, that the rain will fall and it will infiltrate into the ground, so we count rooftops, we count walkways, driveways, paved areas, decks, things like that, those are all considered paved areas because water doesn't just infiltrate right there, it runs off and infiltrates at a different location.
Okay, Mike?
I think so, when you talk about zoning versus what normal people or what an average person thinks of as green space, they're two different things, aren't they? I mean, from a zoning perspective, when you're saying fifty percent of a gre, of a lot is green space, from the person living on that lot, they're looking at that as their yard or their lawn. I mean, it's not a park, which I might think of as green space, it's my lawn. And I think what people, the majority of people that responded to our survey was talking about was not the developer type of green space. In other words, being able to see people's lawns, which is private property and you can't necessarily get onto that, but actually they wanted a park, which is public property that you can walk on. And those are two very different things. And I think we need to grapple with, 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 you know, what we actually want to, you know, provide for the citizens of Oregon on this property and I don't think what people have been asking for is law.
I will note on page thirty-two of the packet, the project goals, we do have dedicate a portion of the site as public park for passive recreation, so the way it's worded right now, we're not having an acreage size attached to that and we're not directing that in a certain location. Again, the trees, the access to the trees and the preservation of the trees is mentioned as another, I guess, requirement, I would say this is the way that this is worded, is projects shall incorporate all of these things and then the scoring matrix, the selection criteria, the two slides down are more, how well did you meet those requirements and then how well are you meeting our goals for the project?
Just one quick note to it, the village can require as part of a development agreement that elements of a development be required to have public access as well. So if there is a, a development that has some sort of unique green space within it, we can enter into an agreement that allows public access to that green space.
Without being a village-owned property.
Without being village-owned.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah Derrick? Just a quick side note, you all did a tremendous job putting this together.
Thanks.
I think it's very objective and it covers a lot of the points, especially when it comes to the when you read this, anyone making a request for proposal is going to understand that there's a certain expectation that there's going to be public green space on this site and those trees need to be saved. That, that's fairly clear within this RFP, so I think you did a wonderful job putting it together.
Okay. Yeah, Mike?
So I've done a lot of work, I mean, I've worked for thirty-nine years in the computer and network security industry, I've been a consultant, I've run my own business for twelve years. I've done, dealt with dozens of RFPs, both issuing them and receiving them, and I've never seen an RFP that was intentionally vague about what you wanted. If you look back at the RFP for JC Park that was issued, we didn't say, you know, "We want a couple ballparks and, you know, figure out where you want them," we said, "We want these ballparks here, we want concession stand, we want a playground, here's what we want." If you look at the RFP that we issued for the comprehensive salary study last January, we were very detailed about what we wanted to get out of that comprehensive salary study. What, when I've seen RFPs that inadvertently had a vague piece in it that, that was subject to misinterpretation or question, the process is normally, you pick up the phone or, or you email and you go, "Well, what did you really mean from this, what do you really want?" And I frankly don't see, given what we have here, that if someone questioned Elise and said, "Hey, how big of a park do you want or where do you want it?" That the village board has given her any sort of direction to answer that question. I think what we will end up with is a bunch of RFPs that don't necessarily meet what our citizens have said in surveys and workshops and letters and coming and banging on our door here have said that they wanted. Let's take just a second and look at this from the perspective of a developer. A developer who sees this RFP and yes, they're gonna see we wanna save the tree and trees and stuff like that, but a developer who sees this RFP, they're, they're running a business. Their purpose of their business is to make money and, and if they don't maximize their profits, they're gonna be out of business. That's just basic how the US economy works, they're not, they're not a, a charity. When they look at this land to develop, leaving something as a park is not something that they will look at as profitable. What's profitable are the buildings that you can sell, that you can lease, that you can make a rent off of. Building a park is overhead and that's how they're going to look at it and the end result is the proposals that we get back will minimize the size of a park. And what you will end up with is final proposals of ten percent or fifteen percent of the land as a park, dedicated to a park and the rest of it's going to be developed. And that may be what the village board and a lot of our board members want, but that's not what our citizens have said that they want. And, you know, we can, at that point, who's ever on the board, you don't have to raise your hand, I won't call them.
I'm, I'm waiting, cause I have something to say about it.
At that point, who's ever on the board, I mean, we can either kick it back out for a new RFP, which is a tremendous waste of money and time, or we can accept the best proposal, which is fifteen percent of park land. We can tell our, 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 you know, citizens that, "Hey, we did the best we could for you." But that's, in my opinion, is not actually the truth. The truth is, is we can specify tonight how big that park should be, you know, where that park should be, so that we address the fifty-three percent of our residents that in the survey responded and said that they wanted a park, that we can address their concerns. And and, I just lost my train of thought, the key decision is not of the future of this property is, in my view, is not going to be made four months from now or three months from now when the responses to the RFPs come back. The res, the real decision on the future of what this property will look like and whether we actually end up with a community park on Main Street or we end up with a tot lot with a swing is going to be the criteria that we put into the RFP this evening.
All right, Carleen?
Along those lines, I have a proposal and the change of the language in the project goals and that would be to say, and this is on, oh, you got it up there. In point one, to change A to the, dedicate the part, portion of the site as a public park and then insert bullet point two, to preserve the healthy mature trees identified in the village's previous tree study and allow public access to these trees. And I would leave to the extent practical off for passive recreation. That would be my proposal to meet that criteria. So it would be.
Give me a second here, let me get caught up to you here.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna cut and paste. So what page are you on, Carleen?
What page is that?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two to project goals.
So number, number one.
So bullet point one.
Change A to the.
Dedicate the portion of the site as a public park, insert bullet point two, and start with the word two, D O. To preserve the healthy mature trees identified in the village's previous tree study and allow public access to these trees for passive recreation. Or to this site, this portion of the site. Yeah, that's probably better.
Okay.
I have to, yeah.
Can I, can I read this back?
Yeah.
Dedicate the portion of the site.
Here, let's have.
So I'm gonna read it back.
Yeah, Candy's gonna read it back.
Right.
So I have dedic, sorry Dan. Dedicate the portion of the site as a public park to preserve, to preserve the healthy mature trees identified in the village's previous tree study and, and allow public acce, access to these.
Let me, let me amend what I said, cause it's, it's confusing. You're right.
Access to passive recreation is what I had.
Okay.
So that's not what you want?
No, cause what I said is confusing, I realize that now, I apologize. Dedicate the portion of the site which contains
Which contains?
The healthy mature trees identified in the village's previous
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Tree study. Cut and paste from the second bullet.
So the healthy mature trees identified in the village's previous tree study.
As a public park.
As a public park.
For passive recreation.
For passive recreation. You would think this would be easy, but it's not.
Well, you're trying to do it while I'm reading it and I'm changing it and I.
Okay, can I read it back?
Please.
Dedicate the portion of the site which contains the healthy mature trees identified in the village's previous tree study as a public park for passive recreation.
I'll second that.
So that's a motion from you, right?
That's an amendment.
No, we already have.
There's amendments.
Yeah, it's amendment.
So it's, but it's an a motion to amend, all right, and you're seconding?
And I'm seconding that motion to amend and now discussion on that motion to amend.
So what does that mean?
We're discussing the amendment.
No, no, I'm saying what, Carleen, what, what does that?
It means changing the RFP so that we're actually designating a por, a portion of that site for a park.
The portion with the trees.
The portion with the trees.
With the trees.
Okay, well.
There are trees throughout the property, so that's why I wanna be careful, there's, there's, I think I know which ones you're talking about, but.
Right, well, they're identified here, healthy mature trees identified in the tree, in the village's previous tree study, I left that in there.
That'd be the entire park.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was.
It's further up on the.
That'd be the entire lot.
No, there's a whole, the whole area here that's entered through Johnson Street does not contain healthy mature trees.
I thought there were, I thought there was something.
I, I guess, I'm gonna need to understand how big of an area you're talking about.
Well, I can tell you if you put, yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay, I would say this area, I don't have a yardstick, but, you know, that.
Do you need a tall person to come?
I need a tall person. Okay, what do you want now? From basically, those two forty-nine and the one next to it and then back past the red oak, at least.
Uh-huh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to, so maybe somebody else.
That's a problem.
Why don't you go over to Jeff, so Jeff can use the pointer.
Do, can you, can you?
I'm, I'm circling, I'm circling the area here.
To borrow, yeah, like, this is my narrative.
Yeah, I'm circling, I'm circling.
So from the, from the street out to the red oak on the left?
Past the red oak, yeah, past the red oak.
From the street, from Main Street.
Yep. I'd actually go all the way to the back of the lot because it doesn't make sense to stop there, but that's.
I do apologize, I have to leave, so I'll look forward to seeing what you come up with or if we're back next week talking about those two, so apologies.
You can watch us from home.
Or, or if we're still here, but talking about it.
Can I?
So you're making that, are we, are you making that part of your motion?
But we have an emotion on the floor, this is an amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and it's up for discussion right now. Okay. Thanks.
So you want, hear Amanda?
Yes, please.
Sure, yeah, so so my, my concern, I mean, I understand that people will wanna know where the, the park goes, developers and, and, you know, anybody submitting an RFP. My concern is that I don't wanna limit us, I don't, I mean, I just don't wanna limit the, the park size frankly. I mean, I want at least half of it to be park, but what if Oregon Sculpture Garden were to submit something that's all park, I'd like to be able to consider that too. And so I don't wanna box us into a situation where, you know, we, we can only give one point four acres if we said like, or, or, you know, a section, like, we could say at least this section. And that way it would leave it more open, but I just, I, I'm, I'm struggling with that, so if someone has language to help me out.
Yeah Derrick, go ahead.
I think that's part of the reason why we kept it intentionally vague on that point because quite frankly, I agree with you on the fact that, yeah, if the Sculpture Garden wanted to propose the entire site, by all means do, but the problem I see is if we pre-d dedicate land for certain uses, I mean, we've had other presenters come in here to, say, the Historical Society. If they wanted to put up a building where that church used to be, leaving the trees alone. If we say that, hey, this portion and this portion only can be the park space, we're pretty much already telling them that we don't wanna see their proposal before we even send out the RFP. I don't disagree that the, a portion of this lot will undoubtedly be park space, so good news, everyone.
And let me just say, I, I agree with both of you, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna us boxed in. We gotta have some flexibility here from, you know, whoever it is, architects, developers, let them get creative and show us what they, what they can show us. So that's just mine, but so Mike and then Jenna? Jenna, go ahead.
Okay, um, so I, I agree, I also, I wanna see what people come up with, I, I think in my time on the board, I've seen some pretty creative proposals from local folks, local developers in our community who hear what, who pay attention to the board meetings and hear what we're talking about. And so I wanna see those creative ideas, but I also like the fact that, and it says very, very plainly in the special notes that we talked, that Elise read off, that we have the right to say no to any of the proposals. If we receive these proposals and we don't like
If we receive these proposals and we don't like them and we don't feel like that they fit the requirements that we've laid out, we have, as a board, we're not required to accept a proposal. And that may take longer, but I would rather take time and make sure that whatever we choose for this spot is the right choice for this spot versus trying to box ourselves in and not letting some of that creativity happen.
Yeah, all right. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, well, clearly, if you preserve the Red Oak and the Burr Oak and you put those in a park, I think you probably want to allow street access to that park as opposed to making that park landlocked behind buildings just for safety reasons. You're going to want to have that exposed where we, police and things can keep an eye on what goes on in that park. So if you decide you want to save the Red Oak and the Burr Oaks and things like that, then having access to the street and visible from the street makes sense. And frankly, I don't see how Carlene's proposal prevents the Sculpture Garden, although I don't think the Sculpture Garden has a proposal on the ground to make this whole thing a park right now, but I don't see how that presents, prevents the Sculpture Garden from making that proposal at all. It's just saying that this portion will be park. It's not actually saying the other portion won't be park. So why not designate as park that portion of the land that, you know, we've clearly heard from citizen after citizen after citizen that they actually want as park? What problem do we have listening to our citizens?
I want to make just one comment about dedicating or designating a park, because we're getting into a weird statutory area right now where if the board took an action to designate an area, that's not lawful right now because under state law, you have to refer that to plan commission first before designating the location of a park. And under our ordinance, you also have to refer it to park board, although you can circumvent that, but you cannot designate parkland right now without referring it to the plan commission first.
Yeah, Phil.
Join the course with the man at Derek and Jenna saying that I'm opposed to the amendment. I think we should take all comers and see what it comes up with. I think Elise isn't here, so, but I'd be surprised if RFPs aren't sent out and they make several rounds. I can't speak to that personally, but I believe that's true. So I would be opposed to that amendment.
Okay.
So what do we vote, the original motion?
Nope, you vote on the amendment.
Okay.
And if you want me to read the amendment back?
Yeah, read the amendment.
I'll just, I'll say one more thing. So if you want to designate a certain size of park, certain acreage, I think that would be fine, but again, I think setting a location of a park, your action, I think under state law, needs to be first referred to plan commission.
So in other words, the amendment's probably moved.
Well, yes, I would say that the motion that is on the floor to designate that specific area has to be referred to plan commission before the board can take an action on it.
Invalid amendment.
So if I withdraw the amendment, what happens then?
Well, I don't, I wasn't clear that you wanted that in the motion. The motion that I have on the floor, the amendment, is the language that you had, but then you started talking about the designation, so I don't have that as part of the motion right now.
Well.
Would you like me to read what I have?
I think that's what we want to vote on right now, if everyone agrees. Yeah, you should read.
Okay, so I have Beschen moved, seconded by Wunsch, to change the language in the RFP to dedicate the portion of the site which contains the healthy mature trees identified in the village's previous tree study as a public park for passive recreation. But I don't, I didn't have like the outline that you were pointing to, I don't have that in, like.
Well, just the fact that it says, let's make it a park.
Yes, agree.
Goes to Martin's point.
I mean, I think you could tinker with the language, but effectively what you would be saying is, we would like this, but we're not committed to it.
Yeah.
Without, unless you're firmly saying this is the spot where we want a park, then it needs to be referred to plan commission.
Yep. So we could say like the board would strongly prefer.
Right.
Something like that, but we can't.
But you can't commit yourself to that without the plan commission making recommendation first. So it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't mean you can't do it, it just means we have to spend some time going through that process.
All right, so where do we go?
And Carlene, you had a question if you wanted to withdraw your motion. The motion belongs to the board right now, so everybody would have to agree to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can we, can we do that? Motion that violates state law, or does it?
I'll abstain.
Is the motion invalid because it's a violation of state law?
Yeah, it would be invalid, yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to vote on it?
So it's invalid.
I think we have a consensus that everybody agrees that it's done, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you can make another amendment.
Yeah.
Happy to.
Not encouraging that.
I would like to make an amendment that a minimum of 1.4 acres of this site be considered as a park.
Is there a second?
No.
Okay.
Who's second?
You doing a second?
Carlene.
All right, Phil, discussion.
Going back to, I'd like to see as many proposals with as many ideas as possible, and that just, again, puts a limit on there that I personally would rather not see.
Mike, you said 1.4, right?
Yes.
So I'm just gonna say I.
You said minimum, minimal.
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 To accommodate you and Derek's objections, yes.
So, so right from the beginning, the, my issue has always been the tax debt. And I'm not gonna move off that because I think that the taxpayers need to get as much money, we need to get as much money as we can from this land. And having said that, I'm not against, I'm also not against having a park. I mean, if you, we've kind of done full circle. If you saw the first proposal, there was a park piece. Maybe it wasn't big enough for some people, but there was a piece. And I, you know, I like that because then it was a compromise. Somebody gets, everybody gets a little bit of something, but I, I want, I want that flexibility that we can get as much money as we can, taxpayer money, out of this park, out of this, this lot, and if we can still do a small park, fine. But I also want the flexibility. I don't want to see, the park has to be on the North Main, I don't want that. I think, let's see what we get. We always can work with these folks and switch things around. I mean, right, Martin? We can do that.
Village Board retains the right to do anything it wants in this process.
Yeah.
Unless it's.
Randy, I want to comment. One thing real quickly is, is parks do not constitute stormwater detention. And one of the, one of the, all the proposals that have, we've seen from developers and from the library had about this much area, everything drains to this corner of the property. In fact, there's even a pipe here that is meant to take that at some time in the future. So you have to consider that when you're considering if you're allocating a certain amount for a park. You're also, the developer's gonna have to also allocate, you know, I don't know how many square feet, it depends on how much impervious area, what they plan, all that type of stuff. But we saw this with the library, they had a proposed stormwater pond there and it wasn't big enough, you know, which we knew it wasn't, I mean, it was, it was always a stretch to begin with. But, so if you do follow through with that and, and take half of the land for that and a little bit of this, I think, seems like you would severely limit your development potential or any kind of potential for any viable development to be interested in it.
Okay, thank you for that.
Just a thought.
Okay. Yeah, Derek.
Kind of, I guess, piggyback on that as we're shackling ourselves before we even start. Really, if we put a number to this one point, if we really stick on this half a lot philosophy, we're, we're telling everyone who puts out this proposal that this is, this is all you can do. We're stifling the, any sort of creative process. Any, and again, I'll go back to the Historical, I, with this process, I really encourage some of these local nonprofits to work together on this and come up with a solution where everyone's slightly disappointed, like Elise said yet again. With the 1.4 acres, you're just, you're, you're really setting the tone right away that, hey, this, this is what this is, without any consideration for any other group that may come forward.
All right, Derek, yeah, Mike?
I'm thoroughly okay with stifling the creativity of someone to build and develop over the majority of that lot. I am thoroughly in favor of listening to what our citizens wanted for that lot and allowing a park to be there that actually accomplishes some of the things that citizens have told us that they want. I think asking for creativity and overriding the will of the, of citizens and the desires of citizens as expressed in a $15,000 survey that we commissioned in a workshop process and everything else, demoralizes people and it leads to the perception that the village board doesn't listen to the citizens, and I really don't want that to happen.
All right, Derek and then Phil.
I'd just say to that, with being okay with stifling creativity, it says right on the, I'm sorry, what page is that? Right on page, I believe it's 32 under project goals, dedication, dedicate a portion of the, of the site as a public park for passive recreation. Bullet point two, preserve the healthy mature trees identified. It's already written in the RFP that, hey, we want part of this for a park and save the mature trees. So to then go further and say, hey, by the way, this park needs to be this size for this to be a viable option, I think it's just a little short sighted as opposed to what you could, what you could ultimately see.
Phil.
I, I just want to say that I don't feel like we're disappointing anybody or not listening to anybody because they really haven't made any decisions. And we won't be making any decisions until we see these proposals. So, you know, it may be, some may characterize it that way, but I don't feel like that's what we're doing tonight.
All right. So we do have a motion.
I have a, I have a motion on the floor.
And a second.
And a second, for a minimum of 1.4 acres of the site be considered a park. Correct?
All right, you want to vote on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Six to one, right?
Five, one abstaining, one.
I abstain, because I have strong feelings both ways.
Okay. So we still have the original motion.
Yeah.
The main motion, yeah.
Sorry.
Original motion is to approve the RFP.
Yeah.
Prove as presented.
All right.
So let me, sorry, let me back up. So we have, what was the vote? It was four, five?
Five to one.
One to one, okay. And Beschen, you're abstaining?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And it defeated, yep.
All right, so the, the motion, original motion is still on the table to accept the recommendations.
As is.
As is.
Can I just make a statement and go on record about why I abstained?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I chose to abstain from this because I can see both sides of this argument, and Phil's last thing really was the thing that convinced me that we haven't even seen the proposals yet, and so we have the option at that point to turn down things that don't meet what, what we feel the majority of citizenry, because I, you know, and I counted, I kept a tally, and there's a, a pretty damn close to 50-50 split on this, and so I do think that we have the option to still meet what people would like.
All right, Derek, and then Mike.
Just before we vote on this, I'd just like to reiterate that, again, in the project goals, dedicate a portion of the site as a public park for passive recreation, it is already listed within this RFP. It's already there. So if the proposals we get do not meet these criteria, it more than likely is not going to make it through the board.
All right, Mike.
Again, my objection to this is we're not even saying we want a balanced area of park in this property. We are not specifying anything about what the park should be other than the fact that there will be something called a park of some indeterminate size in some indeterminate location, but that there is no, I mean, when I originally put forward a motion in December to make an acre of this a park, at least an acre of it a park, I withdrew that motion on the idea that Elise was going to reword this to show a more balanced approach to wanting a park space and a development space. I do not see that in here, I do not see any indication of that in here, and I object. I will vote against this RFP. I think the end result of this, given the economics of developers, the end result of this is going to be a bunch of RFPs that if we're honest to the desires of our citizenry, we will toss out and it will be a wasted time. But my fear is that, having invested and gone down far enough down this path, that we will choose the little, slightly larger tot lot with a swing over the tot lot with a slide, and that's what we will inflict on our citizens in spite of the fact that they have asked us for something far different.
All right. Should we vote? Okay, so there is a motion to approve in a second, to approve the recommendation as presented, is that right?
And you know, everybody knows what motion we're on?
Gotcha, okay.
You want to, why don't you read it back?
It's just motion to approve the, the request for proposal as presented.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
And I have one objection, so the motion carries.
Okay. All right. Let's go, can we go to, keep going, everybody? Or do we need a break?
Phil does.
Phil needs a break.
Take a break.
All right, let's take a quick break then. Five minutes. Approval of the January 23rd, 2023 Village Board meeting minutes, everybody? Can get a motion in a second. Derek and Amanda, any discussion on that, anybody? All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, so we will do, we'll do the, the, the public comment in case there's somebody. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on or off the agenda. It looks pretty cleared out, but anybody, anybody can...
I think I saw Lauren's hand go up.
All right. All right, so we were trans...
Lisa's gonna speak today, right?
We did it, we did it. No.
No.
All right. All right, let's go to nine, let's go approval of vouchers in the amount of nine million, 001, 670 and 46 cents. Motion to get it on the table from Phil?
Yeah.
Carlene? I have, I have one, Lisa, or Jeff, and I think, I, I think I know it, but it's, it's 4975. It's 50,000 and I think it's, I, I'm guessing it's, it's furniture for the new village hall?
That's, yeah.
That's what I thought.
60,000, that's our...
It's 60?
Yeah, that's a deposit.
All right, I just wanted to ask.
Yeah.
Anybody else, Amanda?
Yeah, that, that eight million dollar tax settlement payment, that's our taxes that we pay or what?
No, that's, that's, so we collect all the taxes from when the bills go out to the end of January and at the end of January, since we have all the taxing jurisdictions money, we have to pay them their portion.
Okay, gotcha.
So, that's the school district, M I T C and...
Oh, yeah.
Dean County.
Dean County.
Okay.
To pass through.
I figured it was something along those lines, but just checking.
Yeah, we collected of our 26 million dollars, we collected 21 million dollars in a very short period of time.
Okay.
So, um, we collected 83% of the total taxes already.
Wow.
Yeah, we've been very busy upstairs.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else got voucher questions? All right, Candy, you want to take a voice vote on this, please?
This I can do, all right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Bilo?
Yes.
Wunch?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Beshin?
Yes.
And Van Campen?
Yes.
Okay. 10 is my favorite, consent agenda.
I just want, uh...
Oh, oh, oh.
I, I'm gonna pull or ask to pull the admin services agreement with the district off.
All right, so we'll just do A.
Chiefet wanted to take a look at the language and maybe propose some changes, so, um, requesting that be pulled off.
So, it's basically, it's 10A, which is the facilities usage agreement with United Methodist Church?
We'll approve.
Okay, Jeff, all right. Phil and Amanda, any discussion on that one? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you to the People's United Methodist Church.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, 11 is reported committees, uh, 11A is ad hoc sustainability committee. One is authorize the Oregon Sustainability Survey. Recom- the committee's recommendation is to approve as presented. Mike, I have one, there's no, I didn't see, there's no race data. So, maybe we, do you want to, well, maybe we should have a motion in a second first.
What did you say, there's no what?
There was no, I didn't see any race data. Did I, did I miss something?
Yeah, no.
Anyway, can we have a motion in a second to approve that? All right, Carlene and then Amanda, am I, am I wrong?
There is not, no.
Yeah, is there, is there, was just left off, you think, or?
Did you want to include it?
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't you want to include it, Mike?
Um, I certainly, we can include it, yes.
It's all right, I listened to some, what are we trying to include?
So, what I was asking is on the, on the survey, sustainability, I didn't see any, any race or ethnicity data.
Yeah, so when we did our transportation survey, we included that because that is something that, uh, the federal and state governments look for, um, that data when they're approving things. If you survey the community, they want to know who got surveyed and that sort of thing. So, it has to do with getting grant money. So, we just would want to make sure that you have everything you need to get grants.
We can add that.
And, and I always said, my, my thinking was just in terms of diversity, thinking about what, what folks were, yeah, that was my feeling, so. All right, so there's any...
Put it forward as an amendment and allow it.
Okay. Anybody else have questions?
So, you, so you want us to make a motion to add it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I can make a motion to, to add the, the, a question about, uh, racial background, uh, to the sustainability survey.
Jenna, you had your hand up.
Race and ethnicity, thank you.
I'd second it.
Okay. Any, anybody, other questions for, Mike can answer for us?
I did have one question. When it asks, oh, where is it here? Related, it was about, um, how, how much, uh... It had to do with what, you know, mon- like, what was money without saying money, it was, um...
Number question seven?
Seven.
Yeah, is that the one who was like, um, well, no, it was, uh, it, um, it's in here. Just let me find it because I'm not gonna, um, let's see. I got this first part. It was something about using resources, like, these are things that the village should put resources toward. It was the quote, the, the word resources. And I, I'm not seeing...
That's question six.
Six? Yeah, to fo- okay, there it is, and to question six. How important you believe it is for the village to focus resources on these things. I just, that's kind of a vague term and I just, and maybe you're being intentionally kind of vague about it, but I mean, are you talking, like, people will wonder, are you talking about our taxes? Or are you talking about staff time? Or are you talking about, um, writing grants or like what?
All, all of the above.
So, maybe just an I E.
They're all involved tax time and, or staff time and taxes.
Okay.
I mean, staff is tax money too.
So, maybe just put in parentheses something that sort of defines what resources are.
Like, including all of these, like, yes or no, or so, you know what I mean? Just so... The only reason I'm saying this is because the transportation surveys came back and the preliminary results, um, a lot of people were just assuming that the things we were asking them about were gonna cost tax money. And that's not how we intended it necessarily. I mean, we're gonna apply for grants and things, but people were kind of not...
Resources is...
Resources was, was a big part of our, our survey, like, whether we wanted it to be or not. So, um, I just, the more clear you can be in here, the better.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so Carlene, what, you want to give, what was your suggestion again to Mike?
Just that he adds some language to that, it was more definitive and I think...
Okay.
I think Amanda's experience with that is more than my ideas.
Okay. Mike, you good?
I have a lot of ideas.
Good on that, okay. And that's a, we can add that to the amendment?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
All right, anybody, anybody else have anything? All right.
Nice job.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay, thank you.
That survey should be published and outlined by the ninth.
Okay.
Were we voting on this?
Well, I thought it was all together.
No, that was just the amendment.
That was the amendment.
Now, we have to go back to the regular...
Okay, thank you, Candy.
All right. So, I think we had a...
Then we had a, a motion in a second for good.
Yep, that one's already, now, that was just the motion on the floor.
All right. Any other discussion, otherwise all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Now, am I clear, am I out of the doghouse now?
Yep.
You can move on.
All right, thank God. 11B is Finance Personnel Committee. Uh, I is Village Administrative Performance Evaluation, authorized, uh, process and for annual evaluation and Jenna's gonna tell us about this.
Yeah, so, um, I think Martin's memo does a nice summary, but I'll, I'll just recap a little bit. Um, we, uh, are supposed to be evaluating our administrator annually and we, uh, uh, wanted to make sure that we were doing, uh, had a good solid process in place, had a good, um, evaluation form to use. So, we, um, looked at a few different options, we got feedback from department heads, we spent a lot of time going over the questions and tweaking them to make sure that we were hopefully getting the, um, asking the question that we're intending to ask and what you see before you is, um, or what you have to vote on today is the results of that work. Um, there's also a timeline in the memo that we discussed as far as how we would like to proceed with the evaluation. So, um, if the board approves the evaluation tonight with or without changes, um, the, uh, then we would like to distribute it to the board and department heads to get feedback. I would then, um, for the department heads, um, collect all that information and put it in like a spreadsheet or some sort of, uh, way that we have, we can pass that on and then we'll go into a closed discussion as a board to put together our own feedback forms plus, uh, that information before we, um, have that discussion with Martin in a third, second closed session.
Okay.
Have you taken any questions on that?
Nice job. You want to ask for a motion, Jenna?
Oh, um, yes, we have a motion to approve the, Derek, President, thank you. Any other, any questions, comments, concerns? All right, do you want me to talk?
Yeah, go ahead, you can call it.
All in favor?
Go.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.
All right. So, so 11th, 11, we're on to 11C, which is Or- Oregon Area Fire EMS District Commission. Looks like we're looking for an appointment to, and we, I think we talked about this at, um, one of our joint meetings, I think, at the senior center, appoint, uh, appointment to the Oregon Area Fire EMS District Station Planning Committee. Um, I know Derek has talked to me about being interested, if anybody else from the board is interested, they can talk to me and then we'll, we'll make a recommendation, Derek, or I mean, Martin?
Yeah, so, I think my memo maybe...
Yeah, you had a memo, so it, it could be somebody outside too. It's in there, I read it.
Nope, there's a, there's an email in here. Yeah. I don't, maybe my, my memo didn't get in there, but, um, or maybe I just dropped it.
No, it was there.
No, not...
It was there.
So, with the appointments to a committee, if it's not a committee that's been already established by rule or regulation as far as appointments go, the village board has the option of doing one, one of two things. It can either have the president nominate and the board confirm or the village board can take the whole process unto itself and put nominations forward and make a confirmation. Um, there's no requirements on this, this nomination, so it could be a village board member, it could be, um, somebody from the public, it could be a member of the village staff. This committee's likely to be in this process for quite a long haul, maybe up to five plus years. So, you would want to appoint somebody who's, um, committed to it and will do a good job of communicating back to the board and will do a good job of communicating to the committee what the board wants to communicate. So, those are the only thoughts that I had to share with the board.
So, we could take action?
You could, if you wanted.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda.
I mean, as I said, I know Derek has, um, several, several months ago indicated some interest in this. Yeah, Jenna?
I'm sorry, I feel like I should know this, but Derek, you're on the commission now, correct?
I am.
Yeah. I thought so, but...
Well, um, so I think, first we want to decide if we want to have, uh, just the board decide or do we want to have, have Randy make nominations or a third process? I'm, I'm, and I would say that I think Derek would be great.
Yeah, he's on, he's on the commission.
So, maybe to smooth it out, smooth it all out, Randy could nominate someone and we could vote and we could move on.
All right, so, so I'll nominate Derek.
I'll second.
Okay.
The motion to...
Yeah. Yeah.
Or do you need a separate one?
I didn't listen to what you said, I'm sorry.
Do you want us, do you want us...
We nominated Derek.
Do you want us to vote on a process first?
Oh, do we have to vote on a process?
I would say, I would say that you can make a motion to appoint.
Yeah.
There you go.
All right. Motion to appoint.
There you go.
Yeah.
I did, any second.
Can I second it?
Yeah. All right.
So, we can vote. So, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And thanks, and thank you.
Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you very much.
It's a big commitment.
Yeah, that is, wow.
I've only been here for 41, so I'd be...
What's five more?
All right, so we're on, 12 is unfinished business, we have none. 13, new business, future agenda items, uh, gives item, uh, item gives the board members opportunity to place items and new business on our future agenda for discussion. Anybody have any, yeah, Carlene?
I do, will not be for next time though, but I just wanted to make, uh, the board and folks watching and staff aware that the DEI committee is writing a mission statement since we were created without one. And we thought, hmm, maybe we should consider what it is, why it is that we joined this committee and what we wanted it to accomplish. And so, we're, we have a draft of that and we are working on directives, the things that we see as the priorities that this committee should work on and then we'll bring it to the board. Let's see, sometime in probably late March, maybe the second March meeting, so just so you know, it's coming up. And if anybody wants to see our draft, it's an open meeting, but we're always the only people there, so, um, I'm happy to share that.
All right, anybody else have anything? Okay, let's see, none, all right. We'll go to 14, which is reported village officers. Uh, A, uh, was Martin's, uh, report was in the packet for everybody. 14B, Director of Finance, Lees's, Eller's Annual Analysis of Refunding. My take, there was nothing, nothing available to refund that, that worked in our advantage.
Correct.
Okay.
There are some, um, there is some debt out there that's callable, but with the rates that what they are, refunding them would not save us any money.
Okay, anybody have any?
Yeah, jeez. Oh, my God.
I was like, what's going on over there? Anybody have any questions for Lisa?
Sure.
Oh, you want to go back one? You want future? You want future?
Oh my gosh.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, Candy.
Future agenda?
For future agenda.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So for next time we meet, um, Candy and I think will be ready to report on, on, uh, participation in the Black History for a New Day class and just where that stands as far as the first steps in the diversity, equity, and inclusion training for village staff, board members, and committee members. I'm so sorry, Candy.
That's okay. I'm sorry to the public.
I was saying, I've heard that all...
We're all awake now.
It's, it's kind of, it's, it's kind of been that kind of night, hasn't it? Yeah.
Dan, can we get that clip?
Yeah.
Can we get that clip for our ringtone?
You're going viral.
Yeah. All right, let's go, let's keep going.
Well, I feel like I've warmed up now. Now I feel really warm.
Fourteen C is village department head staff consultant comments. All right, Rachel's got something.
It's a deja vu moment. Two things, both about food. Just like the last meeting, right? The first one's a pancake breakfast, just like the last meeting, only this time I'm gonna say thank you to everyone who came out for the event, all of the volunteers who worked the event, all of the bakers who donated things to the event. Some people managed to be in all three of those categories, which was kind of amazing. So just a big thank you to the community, that was a very successful event. And then, an update on the meal program. Last time I was here, we were scrambling, we'd only known a few hours about Little John's suspension of their activities. Um, I was pretty convinced we were gonna miss, uh, at least a day of getting meals to the community, but I'm happy to say we did not. Food went out the next day. The, there's, there is thanks to be given to, especially to, I want to publicly recognize, um, J L Richards and Headquarters who have both really stepped up and helped us make sure that people continued to get meals that needed those meals. So, um, there were other organizations in the community as well that reached out when they thought that we needed access to commercial kitchen with inquiries and willingness to help in that regard. That's not the direction the county ultimately decided to go. They decided they would rather have restaurants, um, provide some of those meals. So, we have pivoted, um, to doing that for a few weeks. Next Monday, consolidated food service steps back up to, um, at least in the short term, while the county figures out what comes next, to go back to providing those meals. So, thank you all for your concern, your suggestions, your advice, it was all very much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, seen none? All right. You want to speak again, Carlene?
I just think that Rachel is just such coolness under fire, and really handles these situations without freaking everybody out, and that's, there's something to be said for that, because, I mean, there's a lot to be said for it, and so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, four, yeah.
Oh, I just wanted to not only echo what Carlene said, but, you know, again, thank you to J L Richards and Headquarters, um, for all of y'all taking care of our seniors, that, that's huge.
All right, village board comments, anybody?
I have one.
All right, yeah, Amanda?
Um, just, uh, an announcement, the next Public Transportation Committee meeting is, uh, Thursday, February ninth. Um, I don't know, oh, it did make it in the municipal meetings, yay, thank you, okay. I guess people will know then, never mind.
So I'll make one, too. The, uh, Public Art Committee has decided to have, uh, the first, uh, art show. Uh, June, June tenth, from nine until four, it'll be juried art. And so we're working on that, so, we're excited about that. This will be the first time it's ever been, the village has ever had a...
First annual?
First annual.
Outdoor or...
Outdoor, be right in the park here, next door. Yeah. Yeah.
Just another thing, I didn't know if this was better under department head or village board comments, but I just wanted to highlight that, um, I know it's been, what, a month or so now that we've been receiving the press releases from the police department through the e-notify, and I really appreciate that. Um, it's really good to hear what, or to be able to see what's going on, because I know sometimes that, that stuff gets lost in the noise of Facebook and everything. And also, uh, just the recognition that our, our PD's been very busy lately with some pretty intense things, and I, uh, just wanted to say thank you for that, because I'm looking at some of the things that they've been dealing with, it's been, um, I'm thankful that they're out there taking care of that.
Yeah. Okay.
I want to add to that. I think it was ironic, and I pointed out to fellow board members that after the chief's, uh, comments last time, the municipality magazine was completely dedicated to policing and echoed everything that she said. Um, so if you haven't had a chance to look through it, definitely do.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, fifteen announces miscellaneous business. Fifteen A is upcoming meetings, that was in our packet, too. Uh, we're on to sixteen, adjournment. Amanda?
I'm Derek.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're done.
Pigeons from Twenty-Five Mile. They flew good this morning on a nice, clear day like today.